Okay, can I have a motion to open the work session?
I must open the work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright, I wanna welcome everybody to our work session of Tuesday, July 11th. And we are gonna start right off with you sir. And a discussion of the New York State DOT 120 Calvert replacement project. Which is now officially one week in. Out of our six weeks or less. So we wanted to sort of hear, you know, from you guys about how it's going. And then I think we, is the chief on too?
I'm here.
And then we wanted to talk about, you know, sort of issues we've been hearing about. The detours and ways we can, we can try to make it, or you guys can try to make it better for us and our residents. So I think we're just waiting for our chief of police to join, but why don't you let us know, just give us an update, how's it going?
Oh great, very nice. Of course, this is the first time, this is my second meeting with the board.
Ah.
Great, I mean, on March 20.
Thanks chief.
Hi all.
Hello.
Everyone, my name is Janet Sayet. I'm working for AE Com Consulting Engineer. I'm the resident engineer for this New York State DOT contract. Replacement of 120 Route 120 Calvert over Sawmill River. And as it was just said, I think we got permission to shut down, close the road on March 28. And but we were given a very tight window between July 5th and August 18th. And so we started the work on time. So I think the one week has gone. And unfortunately, we lost yesterday because of the thunderstorm. And this severe rainy condition, which I think a lot of people are suffering of course, as a result of that. So we lost one day. But on the whole, based on the current construction progress, I believe that we are on track. To complete this work substantially on or before August 18th. As I have distributed a construction progress kind of update, I will send these kind of updates every week. There are additional copies here if somebody wants to have a look at it. We are, we were given 45 calendar days to complete this project. That is about six weeks. And of that, we have, the time elapsed as of yesterday of six days. About we have done 13% in time and about 15 to 20% in workforce. Because of extraordinary current, what do you call, flowing through the river. Even today, we could not complete the full day of work. Because by 3:30 or 4 o'clock, the contractor had to stop. Hopefully by tomorrow, it should be alright. We have already received seven or eight prefabricated sections of the Calvert on the job site. We are ready to hopefully tomorrow, we will begin the installation of cut-off walls and the actual engineering stuff. We'll go in there. Of course, as you mentioned, so on the construction front, I think we are just in the beginning and we are on time. So hopefully, I think it will be on or before August 18th, it should be done. Now, on the side issue of which is important issue of the detour. Definitely, I think we have a long detour, more than 11.5 miles.
For trucks.
For trucks and even cars can take it. Those who are coming from outside Newcastle area. But for local residents, unfortunately, there is not much of a room available. So from the Douglas Road is extremely congested during rush hour. So I have been also noticing this morning also, it was almost from Douglas to Hart Scrabble. Everything was packed up.
I've been in it every day driving to Brooklyn.
And this is during school, was that drop off and pickup?
So. During.
Or school?
Yeah.
Camp?
I mean, yeah.
And this is actually probably during 7:00 to 10:00, 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning and in the evening rush hours. And we, we were using Newcastle Police Department traffic police support for five days. It is a little unusual, New York State DOT, this is a New York State DOT contract. To be constructed behind closed roadway. So no police, special work zone traffic control is required. By New York State DOT's policies and procedures. So my hands are kind of tied in the sense, I don't have any provision in my contract to pay for the police officers for their traffic duties. So but still, still I got a special permission for five days. And we have already utilized, today was the fifth day of the police department's presence. Starting tomorrow, I have asked the contractor to put in some flat person at the Kip Street. Which is a kind of little bit dangerous because the turn is very sharp. People are still coming very fast to make that turn. So we will be using a flat person to direct the traffic.
At Hunt's. That's going south.
That's going south, going south. Going north, everything is alright, it's over. There is no obstruction. But going south and people are coming from, what do you call, north going south and making a right turn on Kip. That is kind of little bit dangerous, still dangerous. And because the construction is exactly, the limit is at Kip Street. And at Hunt's Place, we have a traffic light, so it's a controlled intersection. But it's a, it's such a complicated intersection, as you all know, there are so many roads are coming in there. And so that's how some, Douglas is completely invisible from the traffic light. So even the police officer is not aware of what's going on on Douglas. So we will, we will try to see, we will try our best to, what do you call, since the traffic signal is controlling the traffic there. I hope things will work it out, that people will understand, one week is all we go. Another five weeks.
Of course, it was a pretty quiet week, given that it was 4th of July.
Yeah.
Week. Do you have, has the Department of Transportation given any thought to closing the Sawmill over there, that exit? Because my understanding is it's been backing up onto the Sawmill River Parkway.
Yeah, I haven't heard any such proposal from them, but I can definitely speak to my supervisor on this. And I think Chief Carroll also called me and said that there was a lot of congestion, he noticed on the first, I think, couple of days at Exit, Chappaqua exit.
Right, the county actually, the county police came to investigate the cause of the.
Yeah, I spoke to my boss and he said that there is no such plan to, what do you call, close any exit at this stage. Because we have to notify the people, it will take maybe at least two to three or four weeks by the time you will be done. So, you know, we'll continue to monitor, let me put it this way. And I will definitely talk, speak to my supervisor tomorrow and discuss with him. You are talking about that exit that comes on the Sawmill southbound?
Going.
Going north?
Going north.
Going north, that's 32, exit 32.
Yes, exit 32.
Okay.
Right, isn't it going north?
No, you're talking about the one that turns onto Hunt's Place or the statue, right?
Right, yes.
That, that is south, that is going.
Oh, that's going.
That's going south.
Yes, any, yeah, anything going towards white line is south.
South.
Really.
Yes, yes, south.
I'm sorry, so that takes a very sharp U-turn and comes to Hunt's Place. I think probably that could be, I'll discuss this issue with my boss and then I'll see if I will update you on that.
You get to 29, 28, you get another flagger there and try to mitigate traffic or something.
You know, do you see any problem at that exit, actually the real issue of what I noticed was at the traffic light on Hunt's Place. There, there is not enough time.
No, I think it was backed up on the Parkway, correct? Chief, can you clarify?
Yeah, I know of at least four occasions that it was backed up on the Parkway.
And that's the north, the exit going north or the exit coming south?
It's the exit going north, there's just that short like exit before you make the left on Hunt's. And if you're gonna do flaggers, I think like you, like you pointed out. So you like you pointed out, like Douglas and Mill River are a problem, so maybe you need two flaggers. One at, you know, Quaker and Douglas, and then one at Douglas and Mill River.
Okay.
I think maybe most of the commuting traffic would go south.
Ruth, they usually exit, I guess, and head north on 32.
So, you know, I would really advocate, and chief, I think I'm gonna turn over to you, what are you hearing? Because we've been getting a lot of complaints from residents, I know you haven't, but that's gonna change, my friend. Because we're gonna give them your email, if that's okay.
Well, I, I have a.
Actually, really because we just, we do wanna mitigate, you know, or have you figure out how we can mitigate, you know, the concerns on Kip Street especially. So chief, do you wanna talk to that?
Yeah, sure, certainly, so there's, there's definitely backups during commuter hours at lunchtime. And when a tractor trailer comes through that we're not aware of, that are disobeying the detour. It's definitely mucking it up, which is gonna, you know, it took a half hour for my guy to clear it up. Once the tractor trailer came through. If we're not there, which I understand the state's position, it's gonna be an hour, hour and a half problem. You know, my concerns about the Sawmill backing up, you know, it's a state road, that's their issue, but I just wanna point it out. I do, it is a concern of mine. But if you're gonna have flaggers, I think you at least have to have a flagger at Quaker and Douglas and one at Douglas and Mill River. It's, it's gonna be, without us there, it's gonna be a problem.
And look, I, I agree that, you know, coming over the bridge, if you're going north, it's very clear that you have to make a left. But as opposed to Kip where people might like are coming upon it quickly, even though they should see the sign. But to the chief's point, I've also heard of really large trucks making that left and going up Douglas. Which is a very narrow road to begin with and, and knocking into overhead lines and there have been issues. And without somebody there saying, no, no, you can't go that way, it's a, it's a problem.
Where do they go then?
Yeah, I don't know.
I also. Sayet, I don't wanna like, you know, jump on you, but you said like you, the New York DOT has not received a complaint about it, but. Who does, who's calling, why would they call New York State DOT, they're gonna call local police, they're gonna call the county police. What's the number? I tried Googling it, I couldn't even find it. So where do our complaints go when there's an issue tomorrow?
Yes, so are they going to your email here?
Yes, you can send it to me, I will.
And is there a phone they can go to too, if people wanna call?
I think you can call my, my number should be there, yes.
Your cell phone?
Yes.
You want our residents to use your cell phone?
You know what, because I'm in and out of office, so that's the best number, I tend to the call and take a call.
I have a shout-out.
I have already been receiving calls for the wrong placement of signs.
Thank you. Yeah.
We have a few of them.
So chief, any other, so chief, do you wanna raise the?
I, I guess my question is, if it's unmanageable tomorrow without an officer there and you have flag, people there that are getting overwhelmed. You know, what's the solution, what's, what's, what, where do we, where do we go from here?
We will first monitor the situation with flaggers and see how it is going, and then I will have to raise this issue. Yeah, see, we have completed three converts actually in Westchester County. And of course, here is, the situation is that really the roadways are very tight.
Yes.
And compared to North Salem, Yorktown and North Castle.
Right, you, you can't possibly compare the level of traffic going to there and the.
Yeah. And the traffic is also heavy.
It's just, they have a train station that's going right into town, it's.
Yes, there's really only one lane and stuff was.
One more thing, just wanted to mention, you, you mentioned the traffic light at the intersection of Hunt's and it is a very complicated thing. I know chief had raised with you the possibility of altering some of the timing on that light. Is someone looking into that to see whether or not it can be tweaked to sort of alleviate some of the backup?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for that mention, that, like, Joe, my guys are saying like, it's like a minute or two minutes going on 120 and then like 20 or 30 seconds. You know, for Hunt's and Douglas. And based upon the current situation, it would, you know, shorten the 120 and lengthen the others would certainly help.
Yeah, Rob's the one who reminded me, but I'll pass it.
And now as far as the exit is concerned on Sawmill, so which I'm still, I want to make sure, is it Sawmill southbound coming into the, the U-turn exit into Hunt's Place?
North.
Exit 32.
North exit 32.
Northbound, definitely.
Is that when World Cup is really busy down there? That's.
I would not wanna have my.
Do you think, can I have a one minute, do you have a count of the summer World Cup? They do, but is anybody using the bus company, is anybody using Capitol Bus Company this summer?
Yeah. Yeah, we've been in touch with staff, we have emails, they're there too.
I suspect that's the time during the.
They come out using a car combination.
Like, then afterwards they go south here, that's a whole lot.
Sayet, I really appreciate the fact that you came this evening. Obviously, it's a paramount importance to the board, so I'd like to know if we could impose a contract for our meeting on July 25th. And then again, August 8th, if you could just sort of mark your calendar. I will, you said you'll personally provide the budget, keep those, those Tuesday nights free for us, that would be great.
Thank you so much.
Chief, is there anything else that you, you know, think we can mention about, you know, we've heard a lot of complaints about speeding on Kip? And, you know, kind of erratic driving, people who are annoyed that they're stuck in traffic. So are there any other kind of mitigating factors that, that you think DOT should be paying attention to?
You know, certainly we have received a lot of complaints about speeding on Kip, but that is definitely, is not an issue. The volume on Kip is, I mean, four or five times, six times what it normally is, so certainly, that is an issue for those residents. There's, there is a backup on Douglas, I mean, I, you know, I've been in it, I think everybody's been, probably been in it. You know, my feeling is an officer should be out there, you know, to helping to assist, but, you know, let's see how it goes with the flaggers and. Make a decision after.
Yeah, and maybe there are certain times of day, like I was on Douglas today at 1:00 and there was nothing. But maybe there are certain times of day when, when we would encourage DOT to hire our police officers, not all day necessarily, but in certain hours.
At least to your point, yes, I think commuting hours, right, you know, from 7:00 to 9:00 is definitely reasonable. Lunch hour, you know, reasonable. That's, and then a tractor trailer, which we can't, you know, control, that, that's been a problem.
What do you do with a tractor trailer, like where does it turn around if you're gonna say you can't go that way?
It's, it's fluid, you know, it, try to back them up, try to, you know, clear the intersection, get them through, it's, it's, it's a problem.
How many instances have there been of the tractor trailers, like one a day, more, more than one a day?
You know, it's my officers, actually, because we're out there taking care of it, I don't have an official, you know, documentation, but it's several, several, several times a day.
Is that, that seems like it would really increase the risk of there being an accident if your guys aren't there to catch it.
It, it's, it could be an accident, but it's certainly gonna cost lives.
Obviously, new shipments already offered, those are tractor trailers, actually, the big trailers, they bring in all those colored pieces, prefabricated pieces.
Well, I don't mean your trailers, I mean, they have to come, but we're talking about just general deliveries.
I will say this, the construction people expressed to my officers, they are so grateful when we are there, because things run so much more smoothly, or so smoothly. And they want, they want us there, that construction group said, we want you here.
So I think we should keep in touch and, and see, you know, maybe you can get permission to utilize our police officers for more, you know, more of the time.
It's a tough moment, I will try, I will try my best to see a case during the rush hour, you know.
But can I ask you, what are the conditions you would have to see in order to do that? You know, you said you're going to try to fly people for a couple of days, what, what are, what are the?
Not a couple of days, I think for the entire duration, I will ask the contractor to give back.
Right, but, but what are the factors that you would have to observe in order to, to see our? To say we need, we need police, yeah.
Well, you see, the, the basic factor is money. How to pay the police officers, I would love to have them on my side, but how, how can I pay them?
Right, but that, that factor is in existence now, so, but, but, you know, if we are to look forward to getting office service, what? What would have to be different?
The, I, I need funding, there's, there is no provision in my contract, there is no funding in my contract now, the way it is designed. Where I can pay, so I will have to now, what do you call, introduce an item, which is not an easy thing, has to go through Albany and all this kind of. The bureaucracy is very tough, very difficult. So I think that was the main, even now, the five days we have utilized the police officers, we are paying under an item, we are just swelling the item quantity.
But what would, what would enable you to make that request? What would you have to see that's different?
You know what, one thing is the, the traffic problems, which your town is facing as a result of this shutdown and the construction. So if we can make a case and of course, it, it will go to hire, to the regional construction director and all these people, the main office. And they will have to make a decision. For me, I've just, I executed the contract, whatever is given.
I, I would think you might also want that number of, of kind of tractor trailers who aren't utilizing the appropriate detour. And you really need police officers to turn them around, which is gonna cause traffic and, I don't know, potentially significant accidents.
Yeah, because in, in, you know, in one of the previous instance at North Salem Calvert, a similar situation, a lot of complaints were coming in in the beginning. So DOT said that, okay, you don't have any provision to pay to external police officers. So we will give you DOT traffic management, they have their own DOT police, New York State police. So they provided, then I had to fill in a lot of, five or 10 forms and everything, and then get them on board for a week. And so, but I will check with my supervisor to see what can we do. In this, hopefully before we complete the construction.
And before something bad happens.
Yeah, let's hope that everything goes well and we finish this project without any incident.
So is that something you can do immediately?
I will talk to him tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning, yes, and discuss with him about this meeting and what have been discussed.
Okay.
And also, on other issues, there are two underground utilities under that Route 120 in our project, of course, it goes all along. One is a water main, other is a gas main.
Right.
The water main has been supported safely and it is okay now. But for the gas main is, we, we exposed the gas main, we call in, call, I listen, engineers came in. And they said that, oh, you don't have to worry about this gas main because we have a two-way service in Newcastle. That means we have a spare, another line already there. I said, make sure the people are not, because they will cut and cap the existing gas main under the roadway. So I told the, the engineers, go back, check, 100%, make sure that you have that second line, what you are saying, he says, oh, we are pretty sure. So they are doing their paperwork, they will, that is good for us, they will cut and cap, that means there will be no obstruction for us. But.
As long as they're right, I don't wanna hear suddenly that people don't have.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, that will likely probably, it will not happen. So I will call Eddie Sanchez, I'll call Eddie Sanchez one more time tomorrow, make sure, double sure. And this I thought just putting it on the table, so. Other than that, I think I don't see, it's a small culvert, about 70 feet long, and we are already receiving the covered pieces, it's only a matter of time.
Okay. Well, thank you, I really appreciate it, thanks so much.
Yeah. I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna belaze you to the point, but I just do wanna remind the board. That the board being gracious and allowing the road to be fully closed, save DOT a ton. So.
Yes, that's true.
I, I appreciate the fact that they didn't provide.
Oh, wow, I think that has to be part of the story here.
Right, to, for the, the line item, they didn't provide it for him, so it keeps on a, a, an expense that he can easily. Overhead with because he has no, he has no provision for it.
Yeah, that is the main.
Because it takes, right, it takes some creative accounting on this part too.
Yes, yeah.
To do that, which, which nobody likes to do, and I get it, and certainly he wouldn't do anything without the approval of his supervisor, and he's very efficient at that.
Yes, yes. And you know, our contracts are all audited properly and everything has to be done properly, this is it.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, there is a lot of oversight also, then of course, even if it is not there, we have to do it, the way it is written.
Alright, thank you.
So, thank you so much, thank you very much.
So much, you know, your heart, thank you very much. Yes, thank you, that's good that they're on track, yes.
Yeah, it, it is good, but.
Yeah.
It's a little bit of a red herring to say, you know, he don't have the funds on there and things like that, he doesn't have the line item, but they can, they did.
Right, exactly, you know.
What particularly transportation has. Do you have safety, their safety concerns more than convenience?
Right, and, and this culvert is very careful than the other ones that they picked up, they've all been, you know, significantly more isolated, less traffic.
Less isolated.
You know, easily detoured, this is not.
Yes.
Yep.
Alright, thanks chief.
Alright guys, good luck tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you soon, bye.
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 Alright, our next item, I asked Rob Fleischer to come to talk to us about the airport, you know, with the uptick. Of, of kind of summer travel, I know we've been hearing, and residents have been hearing a lot of, I don't know if they're more, but they're certainly seem louder. And they seem like they're more and lower planes, and I wanted to just have you kind of give an update, we haven't heard from the county in a while. You know, I know, I, yeah, I spoke at the master plan sessions and we haven't heard much, so we really wanted to get an update from you as to kind of what's going on.
So I've broken this down into a couple of different topics, hopefully it's not too detailed, push on, the segments, push on. I've already done some master plan, Westchester Joint Water Works, Millionaire. JSX Blade and Contour Litigation. P-TAS and general expansion issues. So I'm gonna kind of walk through, like I said, it's too detailed.
I'm sorry. Can I, can I just ask you, when we're all, if you have a written report, it would be great, I assure those are your notes, so.
Okay. Sure. I, I would, yeah, I would. Get pinning up, yeah.
If you can, if that's not too much to, to recreate.
Another problem, I was gonna try and get this to a slide and whatever, it just got to be too much.
Well, this was rather last minute for us, because it got on the agenda a few hours ago, so I don't know, I don't know when it got on for you, but.
So we had talked about it, we had talked about it a little while ago. I was preparing something, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Today was summer, as well as, as I would like to.
Yeah, okay, great.
So master plan. This was talked about at the very beginning of the current administration. The Astorino administration passed kind of a, a master plan that is currently still in effect. Right before, when they completed the master plan. And at that point in time, the county had to either submit that master plan or repay like several million dollars that they had gotten in funding for to do the master plan. So they submitted it and said, we're gonna come back with an addendum. And so that addendum process started in 2019. Consultants were picked in the summer of 2019. And then they're getting pushed off because of the pandemic. Lots of plans to start rolling out public sessions in 2020, that all came to a halt. The public listening sessions started again last year, in 2022, from late spring to early fall, including one here at Chappaqua. Several groups have been trying to get links to those meetings so the public can see them, they were all taped and we're still working on that. They exist, I think it'd be good to help people to see what happened, but right now we're taking our hands up. The county's working on it. As I've been told, so that's all taken. So that request remains outstanding, Newcastle had very strong showings between members of the community, elected officials at multiple meetings. The feedback was dominated by residents who were concerned about the environmental impact of the airport. At some point, I have no idea when, the first thing to come out will be forecast of potential traffic at the airport, both in terms of passengers and operations. And when this really gets going, and hopefully we'll get some events noticed, because right now I see nothing out of the horizon. The entire project will certainly benefit from multiple sets of eyes in our community and will be something that would benefit from the advisory board really kind of sitting its seat. Next thing I have here is, any questions on that? Or you wanna send it to the NC5, I double back on some of this stuff. Is Westchester Joint Water Works, this needs to build a new pump station for Westchester Joint Water Works, which is the public utility that provides water south of the airport. We don't get affected at all. There are two alternative locations, it's built, it's built this new pump house. One is in the watershed, it's very close to the reservoir. The other is further away, not in the watershed, but it's still adjacent to airport property. As I said, Newcastle does not get its water from the lake and that reservoir that's adjacent to the airport. A location that would never get built today, wouldn't be approved. But I think it's a larger issue about good governance and environmental stewardship, so I'm still staying involved in that, the airport advisory board is staying involved in that. And I think it's, you know, as, as a good neighbor, and I think all the airport communities have to kind of, make sure there are people who doesn't directly affect this. I think it's important for Newcastle to keep their eyes open on this issue as well.
Actually, I have a question on that, oh, go ahead. Yeah, I do too, so this is a question of where they're going to locate a new pumping station.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm not sure that I understand the important part.
So I don't think that the airport. So I don't think that the airport, one of the locations is right, very close to the reservoir, like really, really close. And so you build something out, you gotta dig in, dig down, construction and so forth. The other location is, you know, like a half mile away, so much farther away from the reservoir. So when in doubt, look, I don't like putting any shovel into the ground at the airport because of PFAS and the contamination.
Okay, I got, now I get the connection to the airport.
Right, so. So those, those are the basic issues, yes.
Yes. Um. So, well, my question was whether this pumps pump station was related to a need from the airport, or is it just near the airport?
They they've had to, I'm not confusing wrong words, it's a pump station, but they've had to they've had an obligation to build this station somewhere for a long period of time, being being put off.
It's the airport's obligation.
So it's the airport's.
Not the airport's obligation, the Westchester Joint Water Works, the utility has had an obligation to build this
No.
and get this done for several years now, they're very much.
Is it because of the expansion of the airport?
No, it's, I don't, I I can't, I can't tie it directly to the expansion of the airport.
Trying to get out. Okay.
I think the issue is just that contamination from the airport could now enter the drinking water.
Yes. Right.
Right, but I'm just wondering if there's an additional issue and perhaps whether the new pump station would enable the airport to expand, which is
not what we want.
You know. We've asked, we've asked a lot of questions about that, and it's hard to find a direct connection.
Position, yeah.
Some of the stuff that will be pumping, it also, it it comes like a filtering station as well, is going up into Armunk, it's going across the airport. Because the bottom part of Armunk doesn't have enough uh water, it's all on wells, and a lot of those wells are contaminated by PFAS now. So they've been using kind of like bottled water, things like that, it's not a residential area, it's an office area, but still they wanna get down regular water.
I see, okay.
So that's also another reason why they're doing this. So but the fact that they are doing this, you know, from my perspective, absence of compelling reasons to do so, which I've not heard yet. My basic perspective is that I don't want to see them digging at the airport and resulting in disturbance of PFAS chemicals and looking throughout the ground of the airport. There seems to be politics here that go well above my pay grade, so I I can't really explain all the competing players here. And the decision is pro- on county executive's desk, which way to go, which side to pick. Millionaire, so the county remains involved in ongoing lawsuits, millionaire is building the second hangar, which would be, which would be right next to the first one, which would be much bigger than the first one. The first one is fifty thousand square feet, this one would be eighty thousand square feet. Uh millionaire says they have permission to build, uh the county disagrees, the issue remains in court, it's being litigated. Uh the core issue is kind of whether the refusal to grant new permission to build that hangar is reasonable. Unfortunately, there isn't a definition of reasonable in the contract, so it goes into general law. It doesn't, uh the FAA has also gotten involved because the new hangar will replace an older hangar that was dedicated to housing light, light general aviation aircraft, smaller aircraft. The pipers, the messers, things that usually individual people own.
And so the impact to Newcastle is if the county loses that litigation and they're able to build a bigger hangar, then there's will be significantly more private aviation there, which seems to be the majority of the issue.
I can't, I can't quantify it, I can't, I can't quantify it. But and I'll, I'll, I'll get to that as I discussed this, but you know, so.
I think that some of this we can gloss over like this.
Okay, so the the FAA has gotten involved too, because the county had an obligation to keep, this is a light GA terminal. And now they're violating that, so the FAA can be penalizing the county for for breaching its its obligations. So it's gotten very complicated, uh millionaire contends the hangar would actually lower operations at the airport. I against anybody who thinks this is credible, uh he said.
Oh, is that the argument that they wouldn't have to then fly to park their planes at Tijuaro that, yeah, that's it.
But they also don't think anyone believes that argument.
No, I don't.
But they also, they don't count a whole bunch of other things that could happen as well, and there's also no way to enforce it.
Right.
It's the way that, once you build something in the airport, you lose total control over how it's used. You can control whether it gets built or not, once it's built, it's done. Other litigation, this is JSX Blade and Contour Litigation, these are the, these are the uh they're about fifty seat planes that they're taking down to thirty seats, and they're selling this kind of deluxe, kind of scheduled flights. Uh typically, I took a look before I came here, the flight they have to go goes to Miami over the next two months ranges from six hundred to a thousand dollars. Regular flights, you fly like for American, end up to one hundred to four hundred dollars, it's a luxury service. It's all kind of like business first class seats on the plane, but they would fly under the FBOs. So they would avoid kind of the terminals, all the safety stuff that goes on in the terminals, the the terminal use agreement, which actually constrains how many big planes we get per half hour and people going through. And it's just another, you know, ability for people who have extra means to kind of skip the system and bring more, more traffic, big traffic, you know, o- o- over our heads. And if this goes through, you know, you can see a lot of other people doing this, it's gonna bypass the terminal, and it's not just it's an issue here because we have a law that prevents this, but it's a general issue that people think is a loophole that shouldn't be be exploited by the airline. So that's the litigation as well, but right now, it's like they think it's at least a year until any more decisions be made there, the court's still going quickly. PFAS, uh left current administration, we instituted water testing on airport grounds when they came back into office. It had been discontinued for several years by previous administration. Uh the airport is brittle with PFAS, uh it's been declared a super fun site, and while the county is monitoring diligently, there really aren't any good interests of how to remediate this stuff, and no one as of now wants to accept this contaminated dirt. So even if you could scrub up every bit of contaminated dirt, there's nowhere to set. So, and we're not the only ones who have this problem, this problem exists in airports all over the country. So that's an ongoing problem, but the county is, you know, paying a lot of attention to it, so I, you know, I'll take kudos to them on that as opposed to before, which is kind of being not not paying attention to.
And and you talked about that in relation to the pump station being a concern, but if it's there at this point, would wouldn't it be threatening the watershed?
Well, what they do is they drill wells all over the airport, so the county's testing the concentrations of what's going on to see how it's migrating and and where it goes, and they haven't found that it's migrated into the reservoir yet. Uh because it's kind of farther away, the epicenter for it is kind of an old Air National Guard Center is which is kind of more closer towards where the road is going into the airport, it's supposed to be next to the reservoir. But still, you know, you don't know what, I'm not the expert in how, how it moves underground and and and, you know.
Right, right. Yeah.
So.
During floods, okay.
Right, and and basically, you know, I I look at, that's why I have the basic premise that don't dig into the ground at the airport.
And don't create facilities for even more.
Right. Right, I'm not sure more facilities would create more PFAS per se, I don't want to disturb any of this stuff.
Right.
Because I don't know, I don't know what the repercussions are, and you know, that reservoir directly leads into New York City's drinking water. But nine million people that are are south of there, that get the water from there, we don't, we get it from the castles, you know, but still, it's like I wouldn't wanna get anywhere close to saying anything that there would be a problem. The other thing there, it is a super fun site. The county's trying to figure out a solution here, but it's a real obvious one. Uh and also three M makes the prime chemical here, the defending chemical, enters into a twelve billion dollar settlement. Uh and the county's trying to get a portion of that to help its own efforts. Uh it's almost an expansion, uh NetJets, who's one of the larger users at the airport, has this lease coming up in the next couple of years. Uh they would like to increase and modernize their facilities. Uh it's hard to see how this would not set the stage, and and the people at NetJets are very nice. They're very polite, understand the issues, they're trying to engage the community, you know, I have thought of that, but there's still the basic premise of where the issue is. And so it's hard to see how that would not set the stage for a lot more throughput of operations for them, not to mention disturbing the area with war, which is really committed at the epicenter where the PFAS contamination is, because they're built right next to the the National Guard Center, they did a lot of the uh the verb testing. There's also the issue that once the county approves them, they kind of have an obligation to treat all tenants equally. So once you say yes to somebody, you don't really have any, you know, some of the things we talked about here is, well, it's much more lack, there's less gray area when it comes to the airport stuff. If you give somebody permission to expand the terminal of the airport, I think everybody's, everybody there wants to expand too. So it's trying to keep everybody at bay, and I'm not sure how this doesn't really create a lot of problems. Uh there's a new greenhouse gas inventory taking place with twenty twenty-two members, that's good. They did one, two thousand eighteen members, and one of the suggestions of the AAB was to do this, I think, every couple of years, and I think the county has followed up on that, and that's being done. And the other last thing I'll mention is that they also are looking into asking our federal representatives about putting more teeth uh into the voluntary constraint uh flying period. And to see if they can, we can take, I don't have any high hopes for it, but they're gonna try and ask for it, because the FAA.
For the voluntary curfew.
Right, the FAA, it gets reauthorized every five years, and that's coming up uh next year.
The problem is that it's voluntary. It has to be.
It's trying to make it not voluntary, right?
Right, so, by by definition, how do you control something that's voluntary?
Look. You, you put teeth into it, making it voluntary. Look, Congress can do any of this if they want to.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they, these are all laws that 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 they pass, they can, they can change the rules and some they want. We are not a major airport, you know, people have to treat it like that. And, you know, so I I'm a firm believer that airports like us, should get some more control back as opposed to, you know, LaGuardia and Kennedy, which are, which are seeing much more throughput than we did.
So let me ask you two questions, um just blanked out my first one. Um, oh, what about the FAA monitoring the heights of airplanes? Because they've been saying that's, you know, the issue in terms of.
Yeah, like, you know.
You mean the highest of like.
Yes.
Like, there is nothing that I've seen to date that indicates to me that the planes are any higher or any lower than they are for me. I looked at this data, and I'd love, it'd be great if that was the answer, but I don't see this yet. Does that mean the planes couldn't travel?
But I think anecdotally, people are seeing planes much lower than they used to be.
You know, look, there may be, every once in a while, but you look at, you know, the whole thing for the month and it tends to show up like like that.
Okay.
The other thing that I will say though is that over time, you've got a lot more bigger planes. So when you see at two thousand feet, when you see an A three twenty, which is where JetBlue fly, their big planes, versus seeing, you know, a small nine seater, they look different, that, you know, the perception on the ground is that 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 A three twenty is a lot bigger and closer to you. So that's all I have, so it seems like that to me too, but I just see the data, I can follow it, and I don't, I don't see it.
So what can we as a town, and specifically as a town board, do to, you know, help advocate for for changes or no changes, um more than we've done before?
Before we. Before we start talking about that, so I just want to get a little more understanding of the the recent uptick in the noise complaints, I think, how much has it changed?
We don't, I will actually say that 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 there has not been an uptick in noise complaints recently.
All right.
Uh the area north of the airport remains one of the uh prime people where complaints come from. And they, and they kind of separate out of Chat, Grand Mount, Kissimmee, it's just three different things, it kind of gets deleted, but still, you can see that we're, we are regular, people, people file complaints. I think that this, there's some perspectives from people that they have, they've been filing complaints. Nothing, nothing has changed, we're probably on pace this year for one of the highest volume years that we've seen in the past decade. Both in increasing commercial flights and private flights. There's, private flights are still eighty to eighty-five percent of the action, so it's still used in private aviation airport. Like, you know, so in terms of uptick, it's really more of a seasonal thing than a, it's like, you don't get much during the winter. But now you start to notice it, obviously, you know, because you're outside. Went through from the south, so there's all the planes land, land to the north, they come over us, as opposed to in the winter, very few. Not that none, but but compared to now, you know, in the summer, it's the, it kind of flips the percentage once. So so there hasn't been, you know, there is really an uptick in complaints per se, I would think people are almost kind of getting tired out.
But it creates a bit of volume that's trending, okay.
This has been a very big year for a airport, right now, I don't have it going back and back, it used to be busier. But in terms of more modern air, with the big planes and NetJets being there, this looks like we're on pace with the busiest year I've seen in decades.
Okay, so then getting back to my question, what can the town and our residents do to advocate, you know, for Newcastle and and for expansion, you know, against expansion of the airport?
Yeah, but you know, I've been on this this board now, I guess I got appointed almost like five years ago, I think it is.
Yeah.
All right, first that that time, George first kind of got kind of involved. And we spent almost ninety-five percent of our time playing defense.
Yep.
You know, everything, time that comes up trying to, you know, really vet things and and advocate for not for non-expansion, as part of, you know, pushing back against millionaire, pushing back against other people to want to, want to do things. You know, the master plan was hopefully gonna be an opportunity to kind of lay down a mission statement that we want to see less environmental impact from the airport, it hasn't happened. So I think we're doing the things that that we should do, you know, we passed the resolution recently how the Environmental Bond Act and interim expansion of the airport is critical. I look at, you know, what just happened this past weekend, you know, if anybody thinks, you know, we're gonna spend all this money, billions of dollars fixing things, it happened from, you know, from from all that rain that we had. And yet, let's put some more private planes up in the air, which are the most, you know, greenhouse gas intensive way to travel, I think, I thought. It's that I don't, and it's the same kind of people, it's like, behind these things, I don't really get it myself, I don't understand how we have people down in DC who claim to be environmentalists, progressive, and yet they don't want to make changes uh to to lessen our our lines or to make it more efficient, and by efficient, I mean less planes in the air. Just talk about, you know, these electric things, which, you know, I don't trust, I don't want drones flying over my house. You know, these things too have to be really, I'm not sure they're here right now, but I'm worried a little about how they're gonna be regulated. These flying taxis, you know, we should make the air less populated, let's put more people up there. You know, put people up there, we should put them in planes, they can hold a lot of people and just send them all at once.
With regards to the pump station, you had said that there was something on George's desk right now about him he being able to decide where we put that in the composition that we advocate for putting it as far from the reservoir as possible, is that something that we could do? Is send a letter?
I I I think he's, I think he's heard sufficiently from the the environmental groups, especially the people down there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh because that really get a, get impacted mostly.
Mm-hmm.
Uh I think he's heard plenty of pushback.
Okay.
From that, I don't think there's a need for us to get specifically involved in that just yet. Right, I thought that this value, excuse me, a resolution, I would, I would say so, but I don't like the value in that. I think he he's aware of the fact that people don't want to see that in the watershed, as a, as a general kind of rule of thumb, don't build in the watershed.
And what have you heard about the timing of the remainder of the master plan, it seems to have stalled.
You know, I don't have, I cannot explain exactly why it stalled coming, look, it's certainly lost momentum with the pandemic, I understand that completely. Uh they started things back up again, I think we did a good job with lots of different public sessions uh that last summer. But then we we've lost momentum again, I don't know if there are issues, uh the county's not gonna speak about it, obviously, that where the master plan kind of interfaced with some litigation that they're dealing with. It's just, it's beyond me, to understand the connections there, and the county's not gonna probably speak about that. Certainly not on the record, and every, every conversation I have, it comes off the record.
Hmm.
Uh, so I don't know if that's, if that's part of the reason, but we just seem kind of held up right now. And I can't fully explain it to you, it seems like not that big. Having gone through hiring these people and remembering how the timeline looked, this didn't seem to be a big, a, a, a big, a big, big time sink in, 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 you know, with, looking at the plans, but it has stalled. So I don't really know where. You know, I, I would have thought, you know, we started this twenty nineteen, we'd be done by now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and it's lapping me for the second time around.
Rob, I had heard a lot of talk about consideration of an alternate landing path, which we directed more over the interstate.
Right.
Um, have you heard more about that, or?
No, so, so we investigated that, uh, there was, there was somebody, uh, from the Westchester Aviation Association who, who did the research on it, he flew the path several times, he worked with the, uh, air traffic control to make sure it was viable. Uh, it was a viable path, and at the end of the day, even though it was a viable path, I think it's one of these things where we, the, the other people were, who were gonna get the additional traffic, uh, which would be the people around, uh, six eighty-four.
North Castle, Bedford.
North Castle, Bedford.
I'll say it.
They're right, they, they, they just, and it's fine, look, and, look, and I appreciate, uh, some of the other times that North Castle and Bedford are with us. And then they're supportive of envi- environmentally, you know, I think, responsible positions. This is an area where, where the people who were elected officials there felt there's no way they could justify, going back to their experience, which you say, that they, they came with this. No, no, they, they.
And I think the FAA, if I'm not incorrect, didn't they say kind of like, if you guys work it out amongst yourselves, then come to us and we'll consider it, and it was hard to, we were advocating yes, and
Right, the FAA doesn't.
North Castle's advocating no, and.
And, so. And I guess if you were, you, you could, I'm not looking to get into a fight.
Of course.
We, we, we could do Bedford and North Castle, I don't think it's a big deal.
But it's, but it's a dead issue, I guess it's.
Right, right now, look.
Dead, but we'd have to get them to kind of agree or some sort of cooperation.
Right, you're looking at. And I think we're giving. Right.
Yeah.
I think, I'm always looking, you know, for, I think there are other things that could be done with, there's another airport, another runway at the airport that is for like general aviation, which they use a lot less now, because, um, I forget the name of the school, but the grange that's just on, on the other side of the airport, let their trees grow strategically, and they, and they stopped letting the county cut them, so people can't really, they cut off like a thousand feet in that runway. So that runway gets used less, and needs more people to use the regular runway. It's like they're incremental things, like it can be done, but it's hard just to move, to move the needle on.
You're saying we should grow our trees really, really tall, yeah?
I think, I think that it'll take longer than you and I'll be alive for us to get in that, theirs were being constantly trimmed every couple of years. And, 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 and they stopped trimming them.
Yeah, dying fast, thank you.
So, so that was another issue, there's not a great, look, as a, like I say, it's been more about playing defense than trying, than finding, we brainstorm about, we used to play offense all the time, you know, to, those from the flight path is one way, but, you know, we scored as, as slowly as we could, and maybe somebody more charismatic than me could convince Bedford and North Castle that they should take it. North Castle's position ended up being that, you know, to do this for the suit yet. So, well, it didn't work out too well.
Oh, nice.
So, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Another question.
Now, I'm trying, trying to.
Thank you so much, Ed.
Write up something for, yes.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, thank you so much, really appreciate it. Um, alright, thank you. Okay, so now we are gonna move to a discussion of the wireless master plan survey and mapping, so I, what? So I think that everyone, I'm not sure Holly was on the board, but, or Ally actually. Were you guys here when they came and presented the results of the, of the Northern Westchester Wireless?
Yeah.
Okay, you were, okay, good. Um, so we finally, I think, received the final report, if that's correct, and I know that this is something that I think all of us are concerned with, certainly our residents are concerned with, and part of what that did is, you know, show where there were issues that there was no coverage, and, and what we could potentially do, and, and what, you know, our town uh, wanted, and most people wanted like hidden poles, nobody wanted big giant, you know, towers.
Towers.
But hidden towers, people were good ones, it looked like flagpoles, things like that. Um, so I know, uh, I've been talking about it with Jill and Sabrina, and so the next thing is to really figure out, taking that survey, where are those gaps in coverage with, with respect to like private property versus public property, because obviously we can put things on public property more than we can on, on private. So, um, Sabrina, do you kind of want, and Jill, do you want to kind of take that away as to what you've been looking at?
Right, so, um, maybe the, the description was a little bit overly broader and vicious. But frankly, where we are at this point is that Sabrina has reached out to her contacts at the county. Um, under a shared services agreement, we are looking to have the county take it overlay with the G I S L A layer indicating property lines. Um, the coverage lines for us, so we can identify which properties correspond to those that have gaps in coverage, and which ones are oversetuned. Um, so we can figure out where we best might identify public properties, and, you know, sort of, uh, do some preliminary assessment just to see whether or not they may be a viable option for cell tower clients to come in and build some, some form of cell tower. And that's where we are, and when we get to that point, we'll be back to the board and let them know what it is that we're doing.
Uh, sort of related note.
Yes.
It seems as though the current coverage we have is not functioning right now, at least for for.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, definitely, uh, mine's been in S O S mode.
So. Can we just hang on to that for one second, because that's, I just want to finish this first.
Yeah. Do you, yeah.
So I think, Sabrina, how fast do you think we can do this, because we were waiting so long for the plan, and I think
I know.
Current issues notwithstanding, you know, I, I think it's something that we really want to consider where we can, we can try to.
Right, I can answer a little bit of that. So this is really, yeah, so we'll find out from the county, you know, we'll get some sort of estimate from them, but this is a first step in a very long
Yeah.
process that will, you know, involve the board and the public, um, you know, just because we've got public property doesn't mean that we can put a cell tower smack in the middle of, you know.
Get the car.
Get the, or, no, you know, we, we, we're willing to try.
Have to wait to access the tower.
I, I also think that it, that the wireless studies a little bit misleading, one was asking people about the preferences, about what the tower looks like.
Yeah.
There was no discussion about the ground components that are associated with the tower and the land area that is needed for those ground components. So when we're looking at proper sites and locations, we have to factor in that ground component to the tower, and oftentimes they talk.
Like generators and things like that.
Generate, the equipment cabinets and the backup generators for each service provider that is on that tower are located in a ground compound. And, you know, for example, if we were to look at the flagpole out there, the base of those flagpoles are very, very large. So, you know, it, it takes a substantial amount of property to create a facility. Um, so one of the things that, you know, we will be looking into is not only where the properties are, but what is the topography of the properties? You know, where do they sit, and most of the areas, in the quick, quick look at what they, what the plan provides, is it's all along the reservoirs. You know, that, where these gaps are, and there's, it requires substantial tree removal, uh, there's steep slopes involved. So a lot of analysis needs to go in identifying where the gaps in coverage are. Also, where there's, um, convoluted systems, where there's too much on current systems. The plan is also very helpful in identifying where there's too much use channeling through, and you know, we would have to reach out to the wireless industry and ask what can be done about opening up those channels and creating more capacity on existing systems, um, which is something that the town has never been a, at the forefront of the wireless issues. We have a permit process for, uh, uh, somebody to come in and propose a wireless tower. Uh, but we struggle a lot, which I think will be, we are very lucky to have this wireless survey, because it tells us where our areas of no service are or convoluted service, rather than relying on an applicant who wants something to tell us that, um, so it's very helpful. But we will, um, in working with the county, my hope is to really identify kind of the pros and cons of the properties, you know, with a, a kind of a desktop site analysis of the areas where we have no service or convoluted service. And then maybe if the town board desires, reach out to the wireless industry and ask about how to improve service where there's too much traction in the network. Okay, so, but it's gonna take a little bit of time, it's not an overnight thing.
You're, you're basically continuing, there's nothing really concrete to report at this time.
Correct, no.
Nothing at all.
Okay.
Wanted to know if I'm missing something.
Wanted to know if I'm missing something.
No, we're moving along.
No, we're not. You know, we, we finally received the final survey, the final plan. What the, you know, the wireless, and it, it runs through many towns, which is why I think it's appropriate for a shared services call with the county with their G I S team and their analysis team. And it's a matter of touching base with them and getting them to take this on.
Yep, and frankly, they're the ones who approved the survey too, so it makes sense to follow up.
Yeah. I, and they may already be working on it.
Yeah. Okay, um, in terms of Verizon, which I know everybody's had terrible service over the last, at least the last few days. Um, so we've been, you know, and Jill can look a little annoyed, but we've been in contact with, with Verizon, we've been in, in contact with Chris Burdick's office, um, to try to figure out what's going on, it's our understanding, they knew there was, uh, an issue with service, it would have been nice that, for them to communicate with us that there was going to be an issue with service, uh, they did not do that.
The fact knowledge.
Um, we don't know, they haven't really given us enough information, but we're kind of reading between the lines on some correspondence we've got. We did just get an email from Verizon at four thirteen P M, Lisa, can you check if it's back, it should be. So I, I don't, I mean, my service is actually okay right now, but I don't, I haven't heard from anyone else that it's back up.
Just try on the app. I'm on it.
I just posted something on Facebook to see what people say, but, um, we're gonna keep following up with them. They did have, the last few days, they said trucks are out to try to validate the problem. I did see Verizon trucks out the last, yesterday and today, to try to figure out maybe what the issues are. Um, so we're gonna ask residents to kind of check their cell phones tonight and tomorrow, and if there's still issues, we're gonna get back to Verizon and see. But, you know, to me, it's indicative of a larger issue, that if they know there's an issue, they really need to communicate with us. So that we can communicate with our residents. Yeah, but we're advocating as much as we can with both Verizon and our state representatives we're meeting too.
But it's definitively a Verizon problem, not the Tower of It or something.
I have heard it's a Verizon problem, right, not a, not a tower issue.
I mean, that, that's.
Whereas maybe a Verizon tower issue.
Right, it could be a Verizon tower.
Yeah, okay, I just, they're being very close to that.
Yes. Alright, um, okay, so now we're gonna move to fifteen minutes really.
So Sabrina and I are here to walk through the latest changes to the draft legislation there are. Actually, two red lines in the packet, the first red line deals with everything except the design section. I think we'll get to the design section probably a little bit more to unpack and talk about, so we'll treat it that separately. The other.
Can we just, um, go back for two seconds and just, I, I just want to kind of let the board know what you guys know, but let the public know that these red lines are sort of your take on what the working group and the board discussed last week. And really just put here for the town board to now discuss it with you. It's not necessarily that we're promulgating these changes, we haven't had the opportunity to discuss them, I just wanted to kind of put that out there for them, for the public.
Alright, so, uh, turning to the red lines, you, the first, uh, again, again, the first red line, um, is everything brought to design. And I think the most part, the edits, the new edits, um, are gonna track what came out of the discussion, um, at the last meeting. Sabrina, so section eight coverage, will be the first one that we should touch on.
Yeah, I think so, um.
Sorry, section eight.
Section eight right now is labeled coverage. Um, that's, this language, I spent a great deal of time working with the town engineer today, Bob Seoli, and there's some confusion with this language. Coverage means something in regards to stormwater control. And to create a limitation on impervious coverage shall be seventy percent. That means how much of the land is covered by a building. It doesn't matter if there's a green garden on the second floor, the first floor is covering the ground. So this language, there's, the first part of this sentence, the applicant shall demonstrate a reduction of impervious coverage relative to existing conditions by incorporating blah, 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 that's stormwater language, it doesn't belong here. Alright, we have, uh, chapter one oh eight A, our stormwater regulations, which the applicant will be required to comply with, which relate to New York State D E C standards, that we shouldn't be calling out in this special permit, because they're gonna have to comply with those regulations anyway. So that part of that sentence should be removed from here. The, the, the landscape planters, green courtyards, that gets into the design, and so Ed and I actually talked about moving some of that language into the design section, um, as another kind of, um, amenity that needs to be provided as part of a development under the special permit. So you'll see, you won't see that tonight, because we talked about it today, but some of that language is going to end up, we would recommend that you consider it in the design section. The other component of this section is the maximum permitted impervious coverage limitation. Right now, the impervious coverage on that property is like ninety-nine percent, because it's parking lot and building over the entire property. The applicant in their zoning conformance table is saying, you know, they're at sixty-five percent impervious surface, because they're counting the green roof as impervious surface in relation to stormwater. When we examine coverage, building coverage, development coverage, we don't look at it the same way you do when you look at stormwater management. So it is recommended to remove that from this. We do not need to do, uh, right now, within the B R and B R P, that there is no coverage limitation, you can have a hundred percent coverage because of the density of the buildings in the commercial area. So we would leave it silent, recommend it to be silent in this special permit, and go back to whatever the standards are existing. So that's the, that.
This is misleading.
Yes.
It's why it was written before, okay?
Yeah.
Why, why don't you want to have enhanced standards, I'm, I'm a little confused, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Well, the, we're not saying not to have enhanced standards, to, the stormwater regulations right now allow enhanced features for stormwater control. If you are looking for standards in relation to design, that should be in the design section. We shouldn't have a separate coverage section, because it is conflicting with an engineering requirement that we currently regulate through different sections of the code.
And how do those sections compare subsequently to, um, what we have now, which is seventy percent?
That's part of, I think, the concern is that when we look at one oh eight A and the standards, and we actually do, by the way, in section seven, uh, just recite that, um, there needs to be compliance with one oh eight A. So, uh, the concern though with eight is that when we try to marry these ideas of landscape planters, court, courtyards with, uh, s, uh, an objective standard seventy percent, it, it's a sort of a disconnect, uh, it's not matching.
Not the same thing.
It's not matching up with what the requirements in one oh eight are actually being prescribed.
And what the definition of impervious coverage is apparently.
Correct.
This is an ongoing conversation, we literally were talking about it this afternoon, and Bob Pauli on the way to tonight's meeting. So we're, we're gonna come back to you on this, but just, it, it, it will likely change.
Can we have advan- enhanced standards for stormwater control, is, I mean, is, you said there's room to do that, I mean.
The, you know, I, I don't know, that, we would need to explore that, you know, there is, um.
So I kind of felt that's what that was.
That is not that, so that's.
And, and the applicant seems comfortable with the idea that it's going to reduce, uh, impervious coverage, and after all, this is actually their initiative. Uh, and they're coming forward, but we, we're embedding it, we just need to make sure that it works for you.
Right, and and right now, if you were to, because I review development coverage, right, on projects that come in, residential projects, where applicants need to account for all of their stone walls, their patios, their stairs, their building footprints, and the planning board in the past has set certain percentages that are more restrictive than what the town code requires, okay? That is a a practice where we measure all the square foot of all of that, we compare it to a number, that number is either set by the town code or further set by the planning board through a sub, an original subdivision application. It occurs mainly in our conservation subdivision applications, because there's a, these in their conservation subdivisions, it's to limit the amount of coverage or impervious surface on the land. If you were to look at this building in regards to, if somebody said to me, verify its coverage, just because they have a green roof or a planted garden on the second floor, it does not make up for the amount of cement that is in that parking garage on the first floor. Right now, at seventy percent, the question is, are you leaving the area over the sewer trunk line, is that your thirty percent? Is it less than thirty percent, like what is that measurement in square footage of that property and then turn it into a percent? I think that giving them a number shall be seventy percent. I don't know that we have made any decisions, design wise, as to whether or not the area over the trunk line will be paved, because it's where the garbage is, and you need to have trucks in there to get rid of the dumpsters or not, or if it's gonna be grass. We haven't gone that far, so to put this number in here in that form, I think is is just kind of locking us into something we may not want.
So I thought what they were sort of getting at was, you know, as rain is falling, you know, it falls on a completely, you know, asphalt parking lot, it's gonna run off. That this building, because it had the green roof and the courtyard, that as rain fell, it was actually absorbing into other areas where it wasn't kind of running off.
And so that occurs with the first flush, like the first couple of inches of rain.
Mm-hmm.
Anything after that?
It's saturated.
The, anything after that runs off, and what this applicant will need to do is put in some type of detention underneath the garage to hold it, so it does not overflow into the town system.
And that's already within our code?
Yes.
It's not.
That's New York State D E C standards, you must maintain stormwater on your site and discharge it at a point where it will not overflow the uh the outside system.
So that's where, because they have some of these green spaces, that it's actually hopefully a little less water, it's running off.
Correct, they get credit under the stormwater regulations for those quote unquote best management practices. The architect is taking credit for it not being impervious. So there's a difference between coverage on the land.
Right, so that's the difference.
And impervious surface, and and this is making a mess of our stormwater regulations. And if you look at the existing standard for co- for coverage in the B R and B R P zoning district, the allowance is up to one hundred percent, which is why the property today exists the way it does. Why every building down here is built next to built, you have an alleyway, you have another building, you know, that it's it's very um practical in a commercial area to not limit the coverage. Stormwater management will limit the coverage, because the more impervious surface you have, the more stormwater you need to control. Okay, and so so Bob has, that that is the attempt, and I will tell you, Bob has had conversations with the applicant's engineer,
So I think we know what the.
He's very well aware of everything that needs to be done to control the stormwater and not impact the town systems. And that is extremely important, and the devil is in the design, and that's what has to come next, in the sense we just don't have, we have a concept right now. And if we put this in here, we are changing that concept, and I'm not sure if you want to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think I was the one who was giving a lot of feedback on that one, and I think that was just the confusion of the definition of impervious surface, um the way they were defining it in their, I forgot what you called that sheet.
Yes.
Yeah, that. The, it's a zoning conformance.
Doesn't align with the definition.
Yeah. Well, they're taking credit for their green areas.
Yes, which isn't, I so, uh yeah, so I'm, I think that was mostly me, so I'm okay, now that it's always down.
Okay. And so we will remove that section.
I understand that, okay.
Um we also, in section nine, in off-street parking and loading, um the work group had asked the applicant to really come back with the amount of retail area that works, right, we didn't want false bronze if you couldn't tenant. And so one of the comments that came back when we showed them this red line was office parking, right? There are first floor offices on North Greeley right now, if they had a tenant for office, um you know, what is that parking requirement? Our, I compared our parking in our town, office parking requirement in our, that's in our code today with the most recent edition of the I T E standards, and we're out of date in our in our code. So the thought was to include an office parking that's updated in accordance with the I T E standards in this section. And you don't have that before you tonight, because it's something that came about today, it's something that the applicant had asked for, and I had looked into where that standard falls, could we refer them to the town code, or do we have to add a new standard in here? It looks like we need to add a new standard here, because we're out of date here on the town. Which direction? Um are it it's, we, the new versions of the I T E standards require less parking spaces.
And an office is um like real estate office?
Yeah, really, yeah, that does.
There's a, there's a distinction for, well, is there a distinction from that?
There there's a distinction between medical and general office, like United Accountant's Office or a lawyer's office.
Got it.
Um and then there's medical office, for um a general office use, it's two point eight parking spaces for every thousand square feet. And for medical office, it's three point three parking spaces for every thousand square.
So will we, will you be adding both of those in, or will?
No, I I think so, I think so.
You're right, the two.
Yeah, and and again, it's about having an active retail, right, and we don't want to be restricted. And you know, as as the town headquarters been discussing, the commercial parking is being thought about in realms to all of the parking lots, and so we just need to make sure we understand what that ratio of requirement is to the availability that they're, have investigated through their parking and traffic analysis.
And so I thi- I think we should add that we're talking about two point eight and three point three per thousand square feet as the new requirements we're gonna add in table, the current requirement would be four point zero uh in the code now, so that's the, that's the delta that we're talking about.
And when we were talking about that at our meeting last time, we said that if they can't provide that, like many of our merchants downtown don't provide that, um they can pay, you know, a fee in lieu of parking. So one of the things, and here it says that it'll be just set forth in our fee schedule, do we know what that fee, they were very, you know, concerned, they want to know what that fee is gonna be?
Yeah, well, so right now, it the draft legislation um is going to require a payment in lieu, because they can't park all of the commercial on site, we know that. Uh so it is a question of coming up with a methodology, and we've um been talking about that, Josh has looked at that. In the parking district now, uh those numbers are based on assessed value, and we can look at the.
Assessed value of what?
Of the real property.
Really?
Oh, the building and the property.
Right, so Josh has uh done some preliminary calculations of what the uh assessed value of this project would be after it was completed, and also isolated what the commercial part of it is.
That doesn't seem right.
What doesn't?
So if you've spent money to upgrade your building, and therefore the value of your building is more than the building next to you, you have to pay more for your parking spaces to utilize your your building than the person next to you whose building is less valuable?
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't wanna speak to how Josh actually does that calculation, but I think, I hear what you're saying, and it would seem that the answer wouldn't be.
That doesn't seem right.
Are there other methodologies?
Well, there are, yes, there are, you can do it based on the cost of a parking space. You can do it based on a percentage of a cost of a parking space.
That seems, no, probably.
Um you know, it's about forty thousand dollars for an obstructed parking space, right?
Yeah.
That's.
If you require them to pay forty thousand dollars for the, how many do they need, thirty, hang on, they need like thirty.
It's gonna have to, yeah.
Yeah, they they, let's say they need fifty parking spaces, right, fifty times forty thousand, that's a payment in lieu. Many times, i- it's a portion of what the cost of a parking space would be.
Y- y- yeah, but when we were looking at assessed value, um you know, barring from what the parking district does now, the the idea that we were looking at was breaking off the the commercial part of the building, because they can park the residential entirely on site, so we're looking
Mm-hmm, right, mm-hmm.
uh based on the.
Right, they don't need to pay.
Entire assessed value of the entire building, so the numbers, uh if we just looked at the commercial portion.
Mm-hmm.
And that was based on the area of the commercial portion.
Still doesn't seem right to me.
As far as about the.
Like they're paying property taxes based upon the value of their property, right, that's your assessed value. But if the point of a payment in lieu of taxes is because the town is gonna have to pay.
In the parking, yeah.
Is pay, in payment in lieu of parking, I'm sorry, thank you. Is that, you know, the town is gonna need to spend money for paving, for striping, for upkeep of of more public parking, then to me, the assessed value of your property has nothing to do with it, it really should be based on the amount of spaces you need, and that payment in lieu of parking should be.
Spaces that you don't have, that you don't have.
That you don't have, right, and that payment in lieu of parking should be equal across the board.
It for this exercise, we could accomplish a different methodology, but generally using.
I have forty two spaces for commercial.
Uh is not, that that's typical.
Well, I just have a question now, what would benefit the town more, and what's the rationale for basing it on assessed value? I mean, I could see a rationale for that, obviously, for properties worth more, it could attract more business and do a better business, and taxes are based on that. So uh you could have a piece of property that's identical size next door to each other, but one is a little more dilapidated, and so their value is less, they pay less taxes, so a lot of things are.
For property taxes.
Determined, right, so property taxes are determined on assessed value.
Of course, of course.
So this is uh the same thing, they're deriving a benefit from the town, and if they have a higher assessed value, that would mean that their their business is perhaps doing better. In any case, um I see a rationale for basing it on that, but I'd like to know what is in the town's best interest in determining what factors to use to determine, you know, payment in lieu.
We had asked uh Creighton Manning to come back with a methodology that would be different than using assessed value, and we don't have that number yet. So before we start talking about where the numbers would land and what the recommended approach would be, let's, let's get those from Creighton Manning and put those alongside of the numbers that Josh is starting to generate, and then we'll come back to you.
So so.
But I mean, I don't wanna argue against that, so.
I don't want to argue against that. Uh Creighton Manning provided a resource called um something about parking, and there's a couple different methodologies that are used. There's the, what is the cost of a parking space, of creating a new parking space, whether it be in a garage or on the ground, and using that, there is a, you know, and they they, in this analysis, they, there was like twenty five different towns, villages, communities that were analyzed in regards to payment in lieu of, um there was a discussion of of doing a portion of that, because they felt that forty thousand was too expensive, so they did nine thousand. Um and they found that anything under nine thousand, a developer would pay, nine thousand and under, a developer would pay, rather than build the parking.
Per spot.
Per spot.
Alright, I see, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll forward you the the chapter.
Nine thousand dollars per spot per year?
No, no.
One time, one, one day.
Oh, one time, okay.
But there were other, like from forty to nine, there's a big difference.
Seems low.
There's a big difference.
Ed, I have one question, are we talking about payment in lieu of a one-time payment to enter into the parking district, and then they'll pay annual taxes, or one or the other?
That was the approach that we were exploring with Josh, they they would, they'd be in the parking district and annually contributing.
Yeah.
Yeah, would you necessarily have to have the same methodology, so if they're, if they enter into the parking district, that's an ad valorem district? Doesn't really matter, to be honest, because you're you're taking one piece of pie, and it's just how you're apportioning with within there, so I think that's a valid method of determining the tax when you're in a district. Could we use a different method for the one-time payment?
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah, and I I think that would be something to look at.
Yeah, I would too, I don't.
That makes sense.
I I think that it's more about the cost of the parking created and maintaining it, than it is about the value of the property, so I'd like to explore the other methodologies.
Right. Right.
So is there a limitation, when we create this fund, um that the parking in lieu of, payment in lieu of parking fees go into? Is it just a general fund, or is it a specific uh fund that is dedicated to the creation, maintenance of of parking? Because nine thousand dollars is not gonna buy us, it could cost forty thousand dollars per spot to to do a parking garage, you're gonna be sitting on money that you can't use for anything else, I mean, how restrictive is that?
Well, the the money needs to be spent for, as you said, uh maintaining the parking, uh so.
Or creating new parking.
Or creating, but in this case, I I don't think we're talking about creating new parking.
Not for nine thousand dollars.
Like this from where as.
God, I don't think so, no.
No, but but how about paving a portion of a lot?
Sure.
Could it be used for that?
It could.
Okay.
But but do we wanna be creating, you know, a fund with seed money, or a
A grant.
Some some sort of parking garage or something like that to.
Yeah, I, well, and that and that's, so so there there's a big kind of issue in the realm of payment in lieu, because are you actually ever, if you don't, if you run out of parking and somebody's in the district, and you have committed to giving them spaces.
Yeah, right.
Are we going to add spaces, and how do you add spaces when you have limited land area, you need to build a garage, so you know, monies like this could be that foundation, the match, the seed, the whatever, to obtain additional monies for building the parking.
And that's part of what we're gonna be looking at when we do.
Exactly.
Uh visioning for town land also, if we were to build a community center, let's say, people need to be able to park there, we're gonna need to do parking, so that's gonna be hard parcel, I think, with kind of determining all of that for town or land.
Yeah, the town is, we need, we need to revamp parking right now, in in our town code, we need to look at our parking standards and update our parking standards. We have a big parking discussion right now, if you look at everybody who's in the parking district, you go back into their actual agreements, certain people have parking allotments in their agreements forevermore, others' agreements expire every ten years. You you know, so we really need to do more analysis about the parking district, how it currently exists, we may be taxing everybody, and they may be unaware that they're not, you know, their agreements is they don't have to pay it, but they're paying it. You know, we just, we need to do more due diligence in exploring that, and then updating our parking standards, and this is all part of that discussion, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think anybody says that they don't pay a tax to maintain it, do they? What they say is that we won't charge the parking.
Yeah, yeah.
That's different.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because it costs money to take and maintain the parking, clear snow, pavement, who's line it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Enforce it.
Yeah, enforce it.
Well, I'm definitely in favor of a larger parking discussion.
Yeah, yes.
But uh not.
We're not prepared for that.
Okay, so I think, I think we need to kind of put a pin in that one, and and see what other methodologies are available.
Um and is that.
I I think we was, was there a change in ten electric vehicle charging stations, like you have this pretty selfless flat, or, yeah.
That was.
I think that's the system.
Yeah.
Is there any um fire prevention or readiness standards to reference when it comes to the charging?
When the time comes, uh when they come in with a a full application, and ultimately a building permit application at the back end of that process, it'll be the time that
Okay, yeah, okay.
applies those standards, and yes, if you exist.
There there are standards, we don't need to, I'm not, I'm not gonna step here.
Right.
Um I have a question on twelve as well.
Okay.
So the, we, we're saying that we want this to serve as a model for sustainable.
So, the we we're saying that we want this to serve as a model for sustainable environmentally sustainable development. And then all these things that are getting referenced have dates like two thousand six. Is this, is this really putting us?
Yes.
Where we wanna be?
Yes, it's not our fault. No, I just wanna make sure that this, don't be.
No, listen, I will tell you, this section.
That even though we need all the government.
I know.
This this section has been carefully vetted
Okay.
to make sure that we get what we need to be ahead in the energy efficiency of this building.
Great.
And not just based on its construction, but its liability and that is something that I am, um, that's very dear to me to make sure that people who reside in this building, if there are big windows and all fancy that they're not paying an arm and a leg for their electric services. Right, so they may be paying a lot, but it will be the most efficient payment that we may need. And that's what all of this references, the dates, it's just because that's what these notices are dated and they're.
I just wanted to make sure that it truly was.
Yeah.
Gonna set us up to be the model of sustainable.
This is a lot, nobody else has done it.
There's nothing more based on it. Okay, thank you.
I think that brings us to the design.
Oh, sorry, oh, that's fourteen, right?
Is there something in between?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, no, that's what my question, next question is.
That's the other question. So a separate, we have to go to that other red line. And, uh, let's see, I I I think we're likely to see a few, we're likely to recommend a few additional refinements in this section. Um, beyond what we we already see. Uh, but in, uh, the Roman numeral hi, uh, there's an effort there.
Street.
Yeah, to kind of take another run at the street wall. And, um, what we heard at the last meeting was, um, uh, you know, some concern about what we were saying in the earlier version and also a desire to make sure that we have some alignment potentially with what we're really talking about is a Susan Lawrence building.
Right.
And I think that's one of the things that we need to maybe be a little bit more precise about when we reference this. That is, because not every building is between fifty North Greeley and to to the corner are are in align.
It's not, we have to start.
Susan Lawrence is a step back a bit from the others.
But there. But couldn't Susan Lawrence change or are they always gonna have to be that way?
It could.
Right, but there's a, but there there is a design issue with that and the adequate retail or adequate commercial space. And so until we see the redesign that the applicant is providing regarding usable commercial space, I don't think we can say substantially aligned with.
I agree with that.
Hmm.
I I mean, we're just not there yet, I mean, I think it was ideal and then, you know, there was questioning why it would be A or B in the planning board and at that table of, is it half the distance? Is it all the di- like, where is it tall?
But I think we landed on on them needing to come back with us with some changes before we can even take on that conversation.
Correct, yeah. Right, so this this language is very draft right now.
The seventy.
So it's gotta be.
The seventy five percent, I think, is still a problem because right now, if I'm understanding what the dimensions they've given us. They have two hundred and seventy one feet that are within the ten out of a out of four hundred and seventeen and if I did my math right, I get sixty five percent.
Mm-hmm.
That means that we want them to make the open spaces or the back spaces smaller?
Yeah, but again.
Is that, is that what we're trying to do or?
No, 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 well, listen, I don't think you want to do that.
No, I don't think we should.
No.
No, we should not.
And so again, there's a difference between writing language and then trying to implement it. And it's really difficult to do unless we have a sense of what the concept plan based on the discussion looks like.
Yeah. Right.
And so that's kind of where we are right now, we're we're waiting for a resubmission of based on usable commercial space and what does that do to the footprint changes? To then try and create a definition of street wall. And so, you know, for me, a street wall is the length of the building against the street. Right, and I'm not talking about the distance of the building from the building to the curb, but what is the length of the building?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, the crenulation, that wasn't the right word, but, you know, trying to characteri- characterize their architectural styling contiguous.
Yeah, I think this is written better the way it's written here.
We're getting better, but contiguous segment doesn't, I, contiguous.
But in terms of. Yeah, but you're saying to allow for building recesses, outdoor and other forms of articulation, I thought look, other than putting a picture there, it's it's really difficult to find verbiage to describe that.
Yeah, and and I can tell you that the architect that saw this said, I don't know what you mean.
Especially when you throw a number.
Yeah.
And so for him to say, I don't know what you mean, when it's his building that they designed, that's kind of.
That's all your new draft or?
So he had a problem.
Yeah, but I saw this draft, but no, you saw it.
He had a problem with contiguous segments, he said, that's a bit of an oxymoron, and it's not wrong, but we can, we can
Segments.
refine that, I think the.
You could say divided into segments.
Or maybe it's elements, contiguous building elements, uh, just so we have the idea that it's got this, you know, sawtooth design.
Yeah.
We may, um, wind up with a a distance, um, rather than.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, instead of this kind of seventy five percent substantially aligned, because to Holly's point, other buildings could change also. I I would rather say provided that a certain percentage of the wall needs to be stepped back from the curb, a minimum of
Set back from the curb.
X feet.
Right, and we can look to what, where Susan Lawrence lands, and when I heard the applicant say la- the last meeting was, yeah, we can do that. So, and we've come up with a number, we put the number in.
Right. I think that makes a lot more sense, because that's what we're trying to get at, that it's set off the street.
Right.
Not that it necessarily aligns with the building, it could be further back, but, um.
Well, yeah, a- again, the lot is very narrow.
No.
And so the more you want it to align with Susan Lawrence, the more space that is being eaten up.
Well, that's why we're saying don't do it that way, say that a certain percentage, it has to be a certain number of.
Right, well, this is saying. Right, substantially aligns in there.
Right, I don't think that makes sense, I think it should be a certain percentage has to be
Certain distance, yeah.
A minimum distance from the curb.
Like measure.
And we will, we'll.
Because that's what we're trying to get, is get it, a setback, an appropriate setback
Sure.
Yeah.
that we like the look of to to present.
And and we we, yeah, and and we did measure on an old plan and they were ten feet back from the curb.
That works.
You you know, and and.
Which feels pretty good, but.
Yeah.
About ten, ten, Susan Lawrence is one of ten.
No, no, this building is ten feet back.
Oh, this.
Which is, yeah, which is common.
And then they had the, the in spaces because of the architecture to create the wider areas.
Right, uh-huh.
Because Susan Lawrence is pushed back, but the usable space from Susan Lawrence, because they have the outdoor kind of seating area is actually further, is closer, so it's like, what are you aligning it to, the seating area or the wall?
Right.
So to me, it makes more sense to just say what we want, that we wanted a certain setback from the curb and put that number. And.
Yeah, and I think it was ten feet initially, but.
You know, and say a minimum of, because if they wanted to more.
Yeah, if they want to more, feel free.
Yeah.
But we will, but again, this gets to creating the pedestrian space to walk in front of the building.
Right. Right.
And so again, waiting for their revised plans to help us.
And it decreases the field of mass.
Yes, but but the importance about this section in particular is that it can be interpreted, drawn and reviewed to comply, and right now, we can't do that.
Uh-huh.
And that goes for all of the sections of the code, right, we need to be able to verify that whatever plans we get meet the standard that this is setting.
Yeah, I mean, that that's really my concern, that we're doing this right now in isolation of seeing what they're they're going to present.
I I'm I'm not so much concerned about what they're going to present, but we're walking into new territory by dictating that street wall or the pedestrian way, because the challenge here is you all seem to embrace what they're presenting you stylistically. And trying to get that stylistic element into the code through design is where we're really struggling. And trying to make sure that we can regulate the specificity of how the building moves in the public spaces they wanna create, because that is what you guys have been discussing that you like. And so we don't want the switcheroo, we wanna make sure we can hone in to as much of what they're telling us as possible.
Yeah.
Seems like the planning board kind of agrees with that direction now too, right, is making sure that we are activating the spaces the way that we can. And this is since we bifurcated the process, this is kind of the way we have to deal with.
Yeah. I I it would have been a lot easier if the process was not bifurcated.
Yeah.
But we have to kind of go with where we are and one of the things that happens is when we put together the draft language, we then s- sit back. You know, I work with Bob and Tom in my office and we say, does this make sense? Because I look at it and I say, I can't do coverage on on this percentage on this lot, you know, that doesn't work. And Bob says, that's stormwater, why are you mixing? I'm like, this is a different thing. You know, and Tom's like, well, I don't even know how to, this is what I would do and, you know, and so we really work this out to make sure that what the applicant gives us can be measured against the code, right, that makes sense. So.
But I don't think the street wall concept makes sense.
It's a work in progress. It is a practitioner's term, it's a practitioner's term.
I think it's a setback.
And it's a, it's, there's a setback, but there, the street wall is where there's active building as opposed to open space.
So where it's set back for the purpose of the courtyard and the pedestrian o- open space, is that considered part of the street wall or is that?
No.
Okay.
Well, it depends, this bit, this is, this is, right, in this version, yes, but that is the difficulty with this building
Right.
This version, yes.
because the street wall moves.
Right.
So you you're not, with a setback, you draw a line, this red line, it's ten foot setback from the street, right? It goes the entire length of the property, with the street wall, you're looking at the building.
Right.
Right, I mean, it makes sense to say at least seventy five percent is set back a certain distance, I guess.
No, but this is not saying that it's set back, it's saying that it's against.
No, this. Right, right, we're not, we're saying that concept isn't right.
Right.
Is that number correct?
Don't know.
The aligned concept doesn't really count.
We don't know.
I so I I need to see their most recent plan and we need to be looking at it.
Exactly, um.
Or maybe it's not seventy five percent, saying at least a majority is at least.
Is more than, I think it's more what we're talking about, right, I think that's what's more important, but it's.
Is, is, yeah. Is a minimum of ten feet.
It's not how much of it is further back than within ten feet or any of that setback.
Uh-huh. Right, but what this is saying that at least seventy five percent of the street wall aligns is, is substantially aligns with the street walls of existing commercial. So in this building, you have this sawtooth, right? This could be where Susan Lawrence is.
Right, but we don't wanna say it that it aligns with the street wall, I think what we're saying here is that we wanna say the use of setback concept is.
I know, but the way that this is, the way that this seventy five percent is referring to though, is referring to something that you don't want right now.
Yeah. Uh-huh.
So the percentage is gonna disappear and we're gonna talk about a way to get the movement that you like with a definitive pedestrian minimum.
Correct, yes.
Okay, it'll be a minimum setback.
Yes.
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 Okay, but we, I need to see their plan, because i- if we go twelve feet, I wanna go twelve feet.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying, but if you only get ten feet, then we're ten feet, okay?
Okay, okay, so that's hi, one.
You say?
I can go with it, I'll check.
Two is, it makes sense, I don't know about that.
We're good.
We're gonna change that, okay, who's living in that world?
We can take three and four together, maybe, and the idea there is to sort of bring in some of the ideas and and design elements we've been talking about and make sure that we we see them.
Ed, I can't hear you.
So three and four, Jeremy, if you're following in the draft, i- it, again, um, language to to make sure, try to incorporate some of the design features that we've been hearing about and that we wanna see implemented. So, uh, three talks about natural light and four talks about open public spaces, windows, other architectural features, uh, about concerning the street wall.
And then, and this is the section two where we would take the language regarding the landscape yards and whatnot, we add this in here. It, you know, as a five, saying, you know, amenities such as whatever the.
Lenders.
The, exactly, shall be incorporated.
Right.
Can, can we?
I don't think we can.
Oh.
Sorry, just one little thing, can we add in four, before the word pedestrian, public pedestrian experience? Just to further differentiate between three that's talking about residential, like residents, the building, this is meant to be for our public.
Sure.
I'm sorry, Holly.
But it does active facade have a meaning?
That to me feels like there's like butts all over it, like it's moving.
Well. No, well, it, well.
I I just, I just wanna, I I I think I know what we're trying to.
The the sent- the sentence is, um, the first floor shall contain, um, commercial uses that will create street activation, something of that nature.
Yeah.
And, you know, we need to understand.
I think that's more descriptive than active facade to your.
Maybe just, that sounds better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get rid of that. Yeah, I just, I I, if that's not like a standard term, I don't feel that.
Facade that activates the.
I don't know, I mean. Activates and enhances the pedestrian experience, the ground level pedestrian experience.
Experience. Yeah.
Right, because we want to get them away from, you know, that faux faux facade covering the bike storage, you know? Oh, it's active, you can look at it, it's a museum, y- you know?
Yeah.
That whole discussion about unusable retail space, we wanna make sure that there's retail space in it.
Right.
Yeah, so it be activated, engaging, whatever the great words are. F, I think we're waiting, right, F is another one we kind of.
Yes, that number is based on, you know, what is real. I mean, because I, and I thought that 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 conversation was very helpful because we don't wanna create spaces that can't be used, right?
Yeah, and I like the sentence about residential units shouldn't be on the ground floor, have windows facing train tracks, I think that was good.
Right.
Yeah. A question though about, we were talking earlier, office uses, um, do, just are we excluding office uses from the public facing retailer restaurant space or could it?
It should be ground ground floor commercial space.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it was intentional to exclude offices.
No.
It wasn't imaginable.
Well, but that's also a question, right, I mean, for you guys, commercial office right now is an allowable use within BR, BR, BRP district. In this portion of North Greeley Avenue across the street, there are offices. Do offices create that active street front? I'm not sure that they do. So that is a question for you guys to discuss, do you want to allow office use as a commercial use on the ground floor of this building?
I need more time to think about that.
That's something for you to think about.
Yeah, it depends the size, I wouldn't want a hundred percent.
Correct.
But if a small, if there was a small area that they were using as like a we work or something and people were constantly coming and going,
If we.
that actually might be good for the town, because people would come and have lunch.
Yeah. If we thought people would really, you know, if if it would be used, but.
Well, I think we can.
I'd like to see other things there first, I don't know, I need more time to think about that.
Yeah, I wonder about it.
Say if we can use the at least language here to make sure that it's kind of, uh, makes, not the first thing that they have to get creative to make an office work.
Right, I think it's challenging to put that language.
But I I don't know that I want an office there unless they're, they couldn't get something else, like, I wouldn't like to consider it a, an endless resort, right?
But it, but it's, but it's not. Yeah.
I I I would say, you know, we could let them come to us, if they can't, if they can't lease the space to the retail, then
See, I feel.
Yeah.
I would say let them come to us now.
Or can we use language similar to Chapo Port Crossing where we've said, you know, a maximum of, of or or.
For, for areas. Yeah, a min- a maximum of a thousand square feet of commercial use.
A minimum has to be used for this or a maximum for office.
But but there's so little space that it just doesn't seem possible to do that.
We, we don't know how much space is there yet.
This sentence that we're looking at now, as written, is intended to focus just on the retail slash restaurant space, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So it's setting a minimum for that, if we go back to one of the very early provisions, uh, in this, uh, legislation, it speaks to what's permitted in terms of the commercial use and it's anything that's permissible use in the ERP. So that's.
So then I think we, so, so I think that this is doing what we want.
Point, yeah, you said the floor was.
I agree, I.
I think so, you said the floor, like it is a retail restaurant and saying, the rest of the space, you know, it's whatever is permitted that district.
Yeah, it's not really.
I. Yeah.
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay.
So, that's it, uh, should we just briefly talk about the the road ahead?
Yes.
Please.
Uh, so we have no meeting next week, we meet again on the twenty fifth, on the twenty fifth, we'll continue the public hearing on the legislation. Um, by then, we also expect to have more information with respect to secret access that we're to look at as an agency.
Mm-hmm.
So, in the conversation you were having earlier today, but what we're thinking is that, um, you know, we need a presentation, walking through, uh, she and I will walk through what the areas of environmental concern are, uh, that you need. uh, that you need to consider and talk about. Um, and none of this will come as a surprise, uh, but what we'll try to do is explain what the category is, and then put that together with the information that you already have, or you will get between now and then, that speaks to that 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 topic. So for example, uh, community character is one, uh, you know, that you'll be, uh, as lead agency assessing. Uh, stormwater is another. So, we'll walk you through what information you already have, what it says, uh, and again, the parts that will come in over the next couple of weeks.
And, um, can any of that be publicly provided before that, so that, given that it's a public hearing, it might be nice to allow the public to comment on what is includeable and SECREAS may have other thoughts.
Well, when, when we, when we send it to you, it will be made available in a packet.
Okay.
Um, it is really, um, an opportunity for you to understand what the components of your environmental determination involve. And there's no conclusions being made in the sense of there's either a impact or potential impact, or there's no impact. For example, community character, I'm not gonna weigh in at this time until the town board discusses community character, whether or not there's an impact. If you ask, one of the categories is consistency with a comprehensive plan. This is consistent with your comprehensive plan. You know, I can answer certain questions because it aligns. Other questions are more subjective, and there are issues that you all have been dealing with in reviewing this application with the work group. And so, you know, the intention of going through this, uh, you know, for the public hearing is to expose you to the realm of the the breadth of the areas that you need to contemplate in putting together your environmental determination. And we're not yet there, because we, again, we're still waiting for information from the applicant, we have our transportation consultant coming in to give us their read on transportation and parking. I can't answer that, but I can tell you, this is a category that we will need to explore.
I just want the public to be able to say, hey, don't forget, you might wanna look at this category, so we want to just.
Well, I'm gonna give you all seventeen categories.
Yes.
Um, you know, I I will put together a memo for you, and then I will have a slide that I'll present that will contain all of those categories, and in those that are no impact, they'll say no impact, and those that are left for deliberation, there'll be no comment.
By them.
Okay.
And to the extent stuff comes in, like the AKRF memo, the applicant's consultant submitted a memo on Friday, if that's not already up on the website, it's already, it's on the website already.
It's on the website, it's on the website. Everything that the applicant submits to us gets posted on the website.
So.
Um, our traffic consultant indicated that they would be able to get us something for, uh, the meeting on the twenty-fifth. Um, they will be here to present their findings to you. Um, and you're gonna ask them questions. Again, that will not be part of my communication to you, because we have a consultant reviewing it. But there are no wetlands, so there's no wetland impact here, right? But that's an area you need to look at, so I can tell you that all seventeen, eighteen areas with it, or fourteen, however many they are, I don't remember. Um, they will cover every aspect of this development that anyone can find where their concern lies.
That needs to be, so again, the exercise is, uh, is there a significant adverse environmental impact? Because if there is, and if there's just one, that requires preparation of the full environmental impact statement, which is a whole other process. But it has to be a significant impact, um, significant adverse environmental impact, not just anything.
Right, everything has an impact, unless, other than, I guess, wetlands, if there is no weather. Right, everything has some impact, but we're looking at adverse, significant adverse.
Well, no. Right, but but you also have to understand that D E C, under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, they have guidance as to what they determine a significant impact is. There's nothing in this development that rises to the level of what the state says is a significant adverse environmental impact. I can tell you that right now.
For which category?
For, and I can't see any of them. Unless you.
Do you disagree?
No, I I I don't, but but that's something that you'll have to.
Right, you, like, the the areas that I think are more, um, are most convoluted, that you have to deliberate, relate to character and visual impact. It does not rise to the level of a state visual impact, but it may be a local impact, but that is something that you guys need to decide.
Visual impacts under SECREA, um, are a little different than community character as a category. Visual is more, is it an historic district, is there a a scenic vista? Um, things like that, some sort of, uh, sort of, uh, visual aesthetic quality, um, that's different, um, parkland. Uh, you want any of those things here?
Right, his, one of the categories relates to historic, um, historic, uh, significance. There's no landmarks here, there's there's no historic geological reserves, you know? So those are easy no impact, easy no impact. The challenging areas of impact that you have been discussing throughout this entire process remain to be the challenging areas of your environmental determination.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, any other questions, questions?
Yeah.
Before you go.
No, 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 on a different topic, so we're we're, we're, they're, they're supposed to be in these comments.
Yep, we're good.
Uh, Holly was just asking me about just a clarification in your resolution for, um, the, um, the grant, the EFC grant for, um.
Bedford pump station.
Bedford pump station.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the last line of it makes reference to, um, the I M G.
Yes.
Grant.
But just the.
Sales.
Yeah, it doesn't appear anywhere else in the memo, right?
That's okay.
That's all right?
Yeah, okay.
It's just, it refers to intermunicipal, and as it turns out, the Bedford pump station, because it's ancillary to our middle water treatment plant on its original facility, so we are, that's the end in.
Yep.
In terms of it being multi- this, multi-municipal.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I I just wanted to get clarification, because it just said I M G without defining what I M G stood for, and I I didn't.
The, and that the I M G is the name of the grant.
Okay.
And like, that that's the grant, that's part of the grant.
Okay, because we, yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify, because it talks about the water infrastructure grant and then infrastructure improvement.
Uh. It's under, it's it's under the EFC's I M G grant application.
Got it.
Thank you. Sure. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina, thank you.
Thanks, so, um, Jill, do you wanna talk briefly about the administrative items?
Sure, um, yes, the, um.
Did the court's monthly report make it in here?
It did.
Yeah.
Clean contract. Uh, the parking report, so, um, we have had a stellar. Um, parking report, just sort of wanted to bring it to the board's, um, attention, so by the end of June, the, um, our our parking enforcement is not in full swing, um, our bicycle leader is only operational and is working the way it's supposed to.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, yeah, uh, summons is issued, what the date, this is the end of June, we're four hundred and ninety-one. The date is nineteen hundred and change, uh, and the fines just paid in July, um, and it's just in June, eleven thousand, and you see the year to date. Just shy of seven thousand dollars, so this.
It, how does this compare with a typical, typical year?
Um, this, um, this is, uh, matches, or slightly exceeds in normal, yeah.
She's the happy one, forcing it down.
Oh, yeah.
She's so happy.
I can't, you know what, for for somebody who takes all the abuse of the window, for everyone who cannot read a, you know, parking sign, and had no idea that that there were permits required, even though they had one for the past twenty-five years, you know, how come now you're telling me about it? It's, um, it's pretty stunning, so I just wanted to bring it to the, uh, to the board's attention, um, so it's really, um, it's, yeah. You know, in a, in a year that is showing us a whole lot of, uh, promise on revenues going forward, this was a nice thing to see. Okay, so, uh, thank you, uh, Diane, for sharing that with us. Um, so we've got payment of claims, uh, retroactively, um, for both, uh, those dated June twenty-ninth and July sixth. Um, we're gonna go out to solicit for a new clean, uh, company, looking on home. Seems to be, uh.
Anyone that actually couldn't?
Yes. We're gonna try, again, um, we seem to be not doing great on that one. Um, we've got our submission of the New York State I M G, which is an intermunicipal, um, grant for the Bedford Bridge pump station, so we've got a finger crossed on that. Um, authorization to award the bid for the middle water treatment plant, this is for the petroleum bulk storage. It's, uh, just shy of five hundred thousand dollars, four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars to, uh, detail construction. Uh, next is the water treat, water, yeah, treatment plant roof replacement to Barrett's roofs is the winning bid. And that came in at a million fifty-five thousand dollars, which although sounds huge, we actually got engineers' estimates of upwards of one point six, so we really appreciate this as well. Um, this is not normally the way our bids have been coming in, so.
We have twelve, twelve bits, I think.
We're hoping. Yeah, um, yeah, and and twelve bits, which was just fabulous, so we're we're hoping maybe it signals something promising coming forward. Um, we've got, uh, Homestead, uh, we're, um, extending this, that, uh, that bid award for twenty-three, twenty-four season at the same pricing. Same thing with the school bus cha- contract with Chapacore Transportation, twelve dollars per child, same same for the next year going forward. Um, we've got authorization to request permission for our two lieutenants to, um, attend the training conference for the chiefs of police. It's a total cost of right under fourteen hundred dollars. And last but not least, we've got, um, uh, David Man has requested a noise waiver, uh, for Saul Street for a charity event that he's been doing for several years. And that's what we've got for administrative, we've got a couple of those issues.
Christian, do you want to get anything? No, I think we're finished, I think we're, all right, uh, you wanna start?
I will start. I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of seventy-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-seven. This is on the summary, AP check register, in detail about your detailed reports dated June twenty-third and thirtieth, July twenty-third. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of one million, six hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-one cents. List on the summary, AP check register, in detail about your detailed reports dated July seventh, July twenty-third. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, July seventh, twenty twenty.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
I move to accept the resignation of Brittany Knight from the position of recreation supervisor two within the recreation and parks department, effective August eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The town would like to thank Brittany for her dedicated service and shed a salt here.
Second.
All in favor?
With salt.
Large, large tier, very large.
I move to authorize posting and hiring for the position of recreation supervisor within the recreation and parks department.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. I move to authorize the reappointment of Anne Hasagawa as a member of the architectural review board for a three-year term effective July first, twenty twenty-three, through June thirtieth, July twenty-sixth.
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Uh, anything else? Anyone, go on once, all right, um, motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.